Tony, can you hear us? I see you online. I just want to make sure that you're there.
I can now.
Okay, cool. Are you, are you sticking online for the night?
I should be. No, 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 I'm sticking online until I get there. I should be there in about five or so.
Okay, sounds good.
Kenny, he could participate over the phone, though, I suppose. We could get our...
Yeah, I think so. And at any rate, the first, I think the first petition, the first matter can be handled without...
Yeah, so I think that's fine to start.
Yeah.
So, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, we're going to begin with our agenda. Do we have any past meeting minutes that...
We do not.
Okay, so we'll move on to agenda item two, and now being after seven P. M., petition twenty-four seventeen for twenty-five Beach Bluff Avenue. Mr. Drukas, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I'd like to ask the board for leave to withdraw without prejudice in light of the opinion of the town council.
Okay.
Go back to the drawing board.
Okay, so I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the petitioner's request to withdraw their petition without prejudice.
So, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm just gonna do a, a roll call. I actually think I'm okay with that roll call on that, so we can, we can move on. I just want to make sure, Tony, we are remote. You're voting yes on the...
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so that matter is withdrawn without prejudice. And I think we should wait till Tony gets here, so he can see everything with respect to, um, the remaining petitions. Are you about ten minutes away? Tony?
Probably less than that, but if we can hold for ten, that should be...
Sounds reasonable.
I couldn't hear what he said.
He said if we don't mind holding for ten, he thinks it's less than that, but...
Yeah, I think we should, just so we see the presentation for the other two. Okay, so we'll pick it up as soon as Tony gets here.
Perfect.
How you doing?
Good. Yeah, been home, visiting families got back last night, so I'm a bit like...
Oh, you just got back?
I wanna go to bed.
How was the flight there?
Oh, sorry, didn't see that. Thank you.
Need to...
Oh, yes, you do.
Okay, so now being after seven P. M., we'll call the next matter, which is petition twenty-five oh one of Rodrigo Paz for forty-four New Ocean Street. One here on that petition. Do you want to come forward and tell us about your petition?
Hello?
Hi.
So, I had a, before we buy the property, we have some existing, uh, building on it for the exit of the ocean. And before I start doing the remodeling, I asked for a permit to extend that existing area, so I can make like a mudroom and change the layout of the kitchen. Then we find out that it doesn't comply with the clearance that has to be done. Um, that's why we come to ask for you guys to take a look, because the lot is in odd shape. And I was trying just to extend it what was already in place. If it was something that I knew before we started, I just changed the plans. But right now, it's already done. Uh, so I'm asking you guys to take a look and see how the plan looks like. It's more like for the kitchen entrance right now, uh, as was before. I just extended. And, uh, the clearance, because it's odd shaped, like an angle, it doesn't comply in the beginning, but in the half forward, it does, and keep going up and up, so...
I'm, I'm just trying to understand what was, I know that the portion that was right up against the lot line is existing.
They exist on one end.
And I'm just wondering where the prior structure stopped as it moved towards New Ocean?
Yeah, it's, uh, the full, the full length was, uh, right now is, uh, fourteen, is that's? Yeah, it's fourteen total right now. The existing was, uh, six, and the new one, um, let me see if it's the, yeah.
Is it the portion, so it was the red all added?
The add, yeah, the red is all added.
Just wanted to make...
Yeah, the six and a half was existing, and the seven feet and a half is the new one.
So, so the exit, the prior structure was six and a half by four feet?
Yes, right on the property line.
And you've added...
Uh, seven and a half.
Or is it, is it, I see the seven foot section, and then there's a two and a half foot section?
Uh, seven is the width.
Oh, seven is the width, yes. Seven and a half is the clearance.
This number is seven point five right here.
And two and a half's the distance off the front, off the side yard line?
That's a seven. I don't know if it looks like a two.
Yeah, I know that. I see this seven. Oh, that one...
Yeah, it's seven and a half.
But what about the, the one that's, um, closer to the side yard? Is that a two and a half or is that a seven and a half as well?
That, that's seven and a half right there, then that's five.
That's five.
Okay, so it's seven and a half feet off the side yard setback, five feet off the side yard setback.
Yeah, the setback asked for seven and a half, because the angle is odd. It begins with five, and two feet over, it turns to seven and a half.
So I see, so where it's five feet, you need relief for two and a half feet...
Yeah.
On a, because that's non-conforming.
Yes.
So you're adding, so you have a pre-existing non-conforming structure that you're looking to add some conforming dimensionally, side yard setback, and some that's non-conforming. So for the, the portion that is conforming, I believe you just need a finding. For the portion that is non-conforming, I believe you need special permit, a dimensional special permit, which we can give you, because it's less than, um, the percentage, right, we have two and a half. Is it twenty percent, or is it, where is there's a twenty percent that we can give them?
Or dimensional special permit?
Yeah.
Twenty percent, yeah.
Twenty percent, okay. So if it's, it's, well, actually, it's existing. You're, you're not going any closer than the existing non-conformity. In fact, it's arguably less, because it's the two and a half.
Yeah, the only, the only issue I have right now with the layout is because I did, I waited for the permit, so it all gave me, I didn't know. So, I built that close, then I changed the kitchen exit closer to the, to the exit. So right now, if I have to open for some reason, everything's gonna be like exposed in the open. I have to demo whatever I have built, and the exit door is gonna be, uh, I mean, like, it's gonna be in the open area. And the existing is gonna be closed, so it's gonna be a really odd shape.
Right, okay. I was just trying to first understand the relief that was required, uh, for the project. Anyone on the board have any questions about this petition? Let's see if we have anyone that, um, had any, um, any questions or comments. Is there anyone that's present tonight on this petition? Could I ask for your name and address?
Is that my camera?
Yeah. Oh, maybe not.
Hello? Okay. How you doing? My name's Steve Gaddman. I live at a loving Pine Street. Um, my house is, uh, directly behind where this, um, the extent, the porch extension went, and the...
Yep.
The existing, the, the six and a half feet there, that butts right up against my fence. Um, and I don't know if you, uh, can I bring some pictures down to you?
Yep, I can pull those up. Got them ready. Hold on.
Oh, okay.
Let me just make sure I share them with anybody online. That's what it looks like from your backyard.
Yes, and when you come into the yard, it just, it hits you right in the face. It closes us in. The six and a half feet, if you see the, the new pressure-treated, um, post down there...
Yep.
The six and a half feet is actually measured to there, where that's not where the, um, according to the print, the six and a half feet is the distance of the existing piece. I know it's only a few inches difference, but bringing it that much closer, uh, to the yard, and coming, if I come off of that post there, seven and a half feet, it comes way into my yard. Um, and the biggest thing is, it's just, it hits you in the face, and everybody that comes over just says, "Oh, my God, I can't..." This, you're, you're closed in back here. Yeah, um...
Yeah, I think an original photo would be helpful.
I do have it. Might just have to scroll through for a second.
No, yeah, I think we had to...
Where are my arrows? That's it from the sort of the street perspective, right?
Yes.
Is this the one you're talking about?
Yes.
This one?
Yeah, that one, they can, they can see, because I have that picture. I don't think I sent you that one.
Oh, you did?
No. So, this one here, you can see, that's the existing. But that's the...
So that, that's the existing, yeah.
That, that was the existing one. Do the stairs come off on the side that you can't see?
Yeah.
On the prior structure?
So, yeah, they're from the, that, where, I think, and that's where they were from there. There wasn't stairs there coming for ten years, I have to say.
Was that a, was that a door that was there?
Yes.
And then the stairs came down?
That door was not there.
Yes. Well, that door, that door right there was put in afterwards. There was a door on the other side.
There was, on this bump out there, was a door on the side we can't see.
You have that picture there, the street view?
Yeah, it faces the street. Okay, and the stairs, the stairs come down in that direction? That's how it looked?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay, I understand now. And was there a slight covering of that door? Is that what I saw?
Uh, that's a metal awning. And then the, the roof got raised up, um, I know, I don't know the distance, two and a half feet, maybe three feet. Um, added on top of that.
Marissa, could you go through the pictures a little bit more, so I can just get a little, my bearings?
So the rear of that is pushed in further, it's almost to where the front of that old addition was?
Yes, that, that, that is just a, just, just a little bit. Um, that, so on the drawing, it says six and a half feet is from the left side of the, the piece that was there to the end of the existing piece, but six and a half feet is actually from the, the end on the left side to that post. And like I said, I know it's, it's only a few inches, but it brings it that, just that much closer.
I guess I'm confused about...
Uh, on, on my side, the only reason that I'm doing the petition is because to be compliant, I have to be, uh, open deck, so I can have an exit for the kitchen, because right now, the exit door goes, uh, way further than it was before. Uh, on my point of view, when I did this one, I was, that's when I spoke with everyone about it. Uh, my intention was to make more private, because the way it was before, I can just build the stair going down. Everyone who's coming down from the kitchen is gonna see his backyard, and pushing that way further, nobody's gonna see anybody. So we can come out of the kitchen, go straight to the driveway, and get in the car, and I don't have to look, uh, anybody backyard. If we had to comply with, uh, the seven feet clearance, uh, we have to demo half, and I still have to do a open deck, because that's the only way I can access my driveway from the kitchen. So for me, it's way more private the way it is right now. I know he's, he's complaining about the, the size of the building, but it was already existing. I understand that it's right on the property line. But if I open, it's gonna be less private, because soon as they step in, out the kitchen, we're gonna look direct to his backyard.
I, I understand that, but I guess just to clarify, the drawing you've given us, because what I had envisioned previously was that you, you had an addition, and you're, and you're moving it down. But in actuality, the area that's not shaded in red is the existing portion, and then you're adding on to that existing portion?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, you're still on the lot line, but it's, that new portion is...
Yes, the existing is still on the property line.
Gotcha.
We just extended.
Okay.
And the same direction was the stairs. We're just blocking the view instead of go down the stairs and see everybody. We're just blocking the view and going the driveway.
And what happened to the permit? Sorry, I got confused.
Oh, uh, with the permit? Um, when, when I requested the permit for the city, uh, we did look on the clearance. So they gave me the permit, so I waited until I get the clearance for the permit. Once they say yes, you can go and do it. I did, and then after we start building, we brought it up that we have to have that compliance.
Okay, so they gave you the permit.
That's why I need the special permit to keep it or to comply. But I waited like two, three months to get the permit before I start doing the, the remodeling.
So from my, my understanding, because I've started dealing with, um, Mr. Cummings a while ago with this, is that the, it, it was on the permit, but plans were supposed to be ad, sent to him, because I know that it would be too close, and I knew we would have had a meeting even before this got built. Uh, and ju- just because I knew it was too close, and I waited and waited for a meeting, and nothing ever happened. And if we had a meeting, we wouldn't, we, we would have been here anyways, but it wouldn't have, wouldn't have been dealing with this here. We would have been dealing what to do, and what, what, what is able to be built. And as far as the porch goes, I, I don't mind if the porch, it's gonna open my yard up. Um, I'm friendly with neighbors. I don't mind talking to neighbors, "Hey, how you doing?" if I'm sitting out in my yard. Uh, but it just, it closes my, my yard, and, and those, uh, those windows were taken out. Those windows aren't there anymore. Uh, Mr. Cummings said it was a, um, a state law because of a fire hazard, um, and they had to be boarded up.
Yeah, this reminds me a bit of, of the analysis that from eighty Middlesex.
Is that the overhang?
Yeah, that was the one, um, I'm just looking at Robin's analysis on that. And that one, everything was, you know, non-conforming. It had, um, more setback than we have here. Right, that was to construct a roof over the existing front stairs and stoop. And the existing uncovered stairs and stoop did not have to comply with a minimum yard setback. The construction of the proposed roof will cause the minimum yard setback to apply to the stairs and stoop, thus increasing the existing front yard and side yard setback non-conformities. And she looked at Bilalta. And her opinion was it required the property owner to obtain a dimensional special permit or variance pursuant to forty-eight six. Oh, not with seeing on its face that it appears, that our bylaw appears to. She continued, what it is, is that issue is the alteration or extension of an existing non-conformity. By further opinion, it all is required. If anything, is a section six special permit. She laid out the test for section six special permit from Bilalta. Therefore, under the test laid out, in my opinion, the board should first evaluate what the relevant work to determine if it is increasing the non-conforming nature of existing, any existing non-conformity. If the board finds the negative, no relief is necessary. If the board finds that there is an increase in the non-conforming nature of any existing non-conformity, then the board may grant a section six special permit upon its determination that the change is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conformity to the neighborhood. One, one thing that I'm wondering about here is the pitch on the roof changed, right? From the prior, was the prior roof flat?
Uh, small pitch.
I'm sorry?
It was a small pitch. It, it wasn't flat, but it has a pitch on it.
So you're not coming any closer than the existing non-conformity? And then you have, uh, the non-conforming piece that I think needs a section, it needs a dimensional special permit, and then a portion that would need, um, just to find it, right? That's how you see it, Marissa, too?
That's how I see it, yeah.
Okay, I agree with you on that. So, uh, sir, anything else that you wanted to add?
No, I didn't know if you...
Is there any, anyone else that had any comments about this petition?
Anyone online, too? Um, can use the raise your hand function. Doesn't look like anyone online.
No, it's not worth it.
So one thing I can tell you, sir, is for the relief that you need, you need two forms of relief. And I don't know how the other board members are thinking, quite frankly, I'm not sure. I haven't made up my mind about this petition, but you need four votes in favor. We have only four members tonight. You don't have the benefit of a fifth member to hear this, um, request for relief. So what has been longstanding practice of this board in this situation has been, if it appears that you are not going to get the relief that you request, then we give you the opportunity to continue, and then have a fifth member to have a full complement of the board, um, at the next meeting. So I would continue with that in that policy, um, if that situation... So I would continue with that in that policy, um, if that situation presents itself, do you underst- understand?
Yeah, I do.
So...
But a- as for me, as I said before, uh, either way, uh, at this point, doesn't make a lot of change. The only thing that I'm trying to, uh, to keep it the way I did. I was trying to make better for where I was gonna live in the house, neighborhood and everyone around. Open deck or closing deck, either way, we get, it works for me, it's just gonna take me more work. It's already pretty much done, and I hold until now to get an answer. But I wanna at least hear from the board what is, what the guy's thinking about it. And if I have to tear down and open deck, I'll do it, that's no big deal. I'm not gonna pursue that further. I just wanna expose it before I, I continue.
Okay, I, um, appreciate that. The, um, so let's, we should discuss this, um, with the board. I'm not gonna close the, um, public hearing yet. But I'm curious if board members have any thoughts about it. I'm really curious what Tony has to say from his view as an architect on, we're hearing testimony from a, in a butter who says it, it's much more detrimental to me. And he's very close to the project. I, as a layperson, look at it, and I can see the argument by the petitioner that, well, I have it closed in, so you're not looking into the backyard. What, what's your perspective on it, if any?
I think the, uh, the big issue is that slope roof. It's definitely, it, you have more roof area, which means you have more surface area to then drain water out to closer to the, a butter's property. Not necessarily knowing what's going on, you know, with flooding in this area or anything like that. I think, you know, there's definitely some low-lying areas that, that trap water in, in the, um, some of the neighborhoods. But that would be my concern, like, over time, you have just water being shed, and that, more water being shed in that general direction. Uh, I think beyond that, the, just the sightlines that were happening, I think, I, I can see the argument where if you're in the, the butter's backyard, I, you might have some issues with, uh, with, no, actually, no. You wouldn't have any issues with light, but it just seems a little bit more claustrophobic, but that's just a personal feeling on that one. Just with the images that were presented. But I think the big issue is the, the water.
Right, right. And knowing that the, you know, the, if it were all uncovered deck area...
That'd go straight through, it would be...
It would, it would, I'm saying in terms of, uh, relief, um, would it need relief from this board? It's the fact that it's enclosed and covered, uh, that's what triggers the need for relief.
Yes.
Even we forgot, because we, I suppose, should do a gutter in the house we haven't done yet, waiting for the confirmation. Because the gutter is gonna direct the water to another area.
Yeah, I, I understand that. I think I'm ju- I'm working off the information that has been provided. So, you know, if there's a gutter, then, you know, that's gonna help, because it needs to then be away from the butter's property. I, I still think that the, the, the actual, um, qual- like, the quality of space, I think, is a little different, but that's subjective, right? If we want to talk about how far away we are, uh, from lot lines and things like that. I, my biggest issue is water, so if, if there's a gutter, then we can re-divert water elsewhere, but I think we need to confirm where that is.
No, gutter will, for sure, will be done. It's, it hasn't been done because we've been waiting for this, uh, to finalize.
Paul, any thoughts about this petition?
I was confused about the window situation.
Well, it shows that there's a...
They disappeared.
There is a window that, um, is on the, facing the backyard. Yep, well, there. What, looks like at least a single window, I can't see on the other side of that vegetation, if there's another.
I believe that's on the main portion of the house, not on the addition.
Oh, okay.
And then both of those windows have now been boarded up?
They are boarded already.
And that, the thinking of that was?
That was from, um, Mr. Cummings. He said that it was a, um, uh, it was a fu- because of fire code.
For sa-...
For safety, those windows were not allowed to be in there.
Yeah, the windows are, are too close to the lot line, so if there's a fire, it can, it can jump over.
It should be a setback, yeah.
Okay.
Because there was one back there, too.
The one to the left is, is, of, of that right there is, was on the, um, the existing...
That was not there, though.
But it wasn't there before.
There was no windows there.
There was no windows at all.
And you, you got a permit without, without any plans or anything like that, it's just that...
The description just say we're gonna add, uh, for the existing construction, we're gonna add eight feet of, uh, covered porch, covered porch, that's all was in the permit.
Eight feet of what?
Covered porch.
Covered.
Covered porch.
So the permit was for a covered porch, not an enclosed, uh, space? That's the bit I'm confused about.
No, it was enclosed, because we need to, to go out of the kitchen with the, the one.
And then do we, is this what you submitted for the permit? It, it's just the plan with...
I, I didn't have the land survey until before we, when we did the permit, I didn't have the land survey done. That was done after.
I, I would personally feel that it would be helpful to see that permit application, understand what was included on the first round. Just so we have a full picture of, of what was approved.
Yeah, I agree.
It doesn't sound, if it's, you know, the, the enclosed or not enclosed makes a big difference.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
So close.
Say that again, Tony, you wanna see the permit application?
Yeah.
I think it should, I think the, the drawings that, or drawings or the description of that permit application should be included, so that we can...
Yeah, to see the full picture of how it played out.
Sure.
What was in front of building inspector. It's, it's interesting, because if that, if, if you weren't looking for the dimensional special permit for that two and a half feet in that area, if it, if essentially it was uncovered and open in that middle portion, it would not be too controversial if it were just a finding for the remaining piece of it. But it's, you need the higher standard.
Sorry, I'd like to know if the roof changes were in...
And the roof changes also, in, you know, I think, um, when you're looking for that dimensional special permit, I think it opens the door to consider that as well. What, what I'm wondering, you know, what I think I'd like to have, I'd like to, um, I think we should have the benefit of a fifth member to vote on this one. I, I did not get a chance to go out and look.
The, the permits say mudroom.
I'm sorry?
On the permit, when I did the, the applying, was, uh...
A mudroom.
A mudroom.
Were there drawings that were attached to that?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay.
Is that required?
No, no, there wasn't.
Sometimes, it depends on what the...
If you need a, if you, if it needs a, a special permit, I would imagine.
Yeah, you need, you, especially where you're, it was off of a structure that was right in the lot line.
Yeah, already nonconforming, so yeah, there should have been drawings, yeah.
In general, if anybody applies for a building permit that involves a structural addition, the building department will require that they submit a land survey, so that way they can verify if zoning relief is needed in some capacity. Because the building inspectors, the building inspector is the person that makes that initial determination as to whether or not zoning relief is needed. And if it is, then it gets bounced over here to the board. And a land survey is that, that tool.
Yeah, so was that not asked for here, or did you not give them?
For the land survey, not when we, when applied, it wasn't me, it was the, the contractor who did. So I think he, he provide what they asked for. Maybe he lacked on more details on it, especially because we're so close to the property line. If it was me, I'll detail more, but, uh, that's how they did back then. So that's why we're just trying to, yeah, straight up.
So that, I, I don't know if you feel the same way, Michelle, I'm thinking about continuing it for a month, so we get a chance to look at it and also we'll have a fifth member. Any objection to that? So that, that's what I think we should do, I think we should continue it to our next hearing. The chair, I'm just the, um, acting chair tonight, the chair will be back. So you'll have another, uh, she'll listen to the, um, the tape, the video, and she'll be able to participate and vote at the next meeting. It'll give us each an opportunity to go out and take a look. I'd like to see it from both perspectives, I'd like to see it from your yard, I'd like to see it from your neighbor's yard. And, um, I think it also gives you an opportunity to try and communicate with your neighbor if you both choose to participate. If you don't, that's your choice. I don't wanna get involved in
Yeah.
any of that type of negotiation or, or meeting, I'm just suggesting you have that opportunity. But I, you know, I don't think it's proper for anyone to say one side or the other isn't cooperating. It's, that's not for us to decide, we decide the case on the facts that are presented to us. So would you consent to us continuing the meeting for another month and not voting on it tonight?
Yeah, I do.
So I'm gonna ask you to sign a continuance form, and I'm gonna make a motion to continue this to the April fifteen meeting. And you think, we're not sure of the location, it may be here, it may be at the senior center.
All right.
I'll aim for here. I like it here better.
So do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
All right.
Okay, so we'll see everybody back on April fifteenth.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next agenda item is number four. Twenty-five oh-two, Mary Burke, here of Chris Druckus, twenty-one Parsons Drive. I see Mr. Druckus is here. Good evening.
Good evening. And I know we only have four members, but I, I think we can proceed with at least a presentation on. Uh, I don't think this is all that complicated. However, if it looks like, if you'll get a sense of the meeting for me when we get through...
I'd give you the same courtesy.
I, no, you would, Mark. With me tonight, a, a, a Tom and Mary Burke. Uh, and I'm representing them, my, I'm a lawyer from Salem. As you know, um, property is owned in the, uh, Mary Jane Burke Two Thousand Twenty Revocable Trust. Mary's the trustee, she and her husband, Tom. I've lived on that property for over thirty years. And in two thousand nine, they, uh, built a, an addition to the, to the structure where his parents moved in, who were rather elderly at the time, uh, and having, so, uh, health issues. The addition that was created back then consisted of two bedrooms, a kitchen, a, a bathroom, and a living room, if you will, plus a separate entrance. However, um, it was not, uh, separated from the house by any, any door that could be locked. And the, there were two French doors that led into the dining room, the common dining room. And the configuration, as I think you can see, uh, it's on exhibit one point one, had the, uh, bedrooms to the front of the house and the kitchen to the rear. That, uh, section of the house has only fairly recently become vacant as, uh, Tom's parents have, um, deceased. The, uh, plan was, uh, developed as Tom and his wife, uh, have now, um, gotten older. And, uh, Tom is semi-retired and spending a lot more time in Florida. And was thinking about, uh, selling his house up here, because he wasn't gonna be here full-time, and it's, it's a significant property. And it, there's stayers involved, and he's pretty much gotten used to one-floor living in Florida. And the property itself is a conforming lot, the structure is a conforming, conforming structure. And the plan, it was simply to rearrange, uh, the kitchen to the front of the house. The bedroom, one bedroom, instead of two bedrooms, make it a master suite, uh, and move it to the rear of the house. The kitchen would then be next to, right next to the existing dining room, if you, main dining room or dining room of the house. And the idea occurred to them that where they had been multi-generational living in, in the property for many years, that maybe it was a good idea that, uh, he could have his cake and eat it too, in that they would still get the pleasure of the larger property. For the benefit, there's a pool in the backyard and all the amenities. Uh, and have his daughter and her husband and three kids move in. They would take the bedrooms up on the second floor. He would, he and his wife would move into the, the addition. There are no changes to the exterior. All of the changes are on the interior, so we filed for a building permit. And then, when we did that, we ended up in conversation, several conversations with the acting building inspector, Max Casper, who, uh, took the position that this was an ADU. Uh, this section of the house that we were remodeling. We tried to explain to him that it was not an ADU, that it was a situation, it was not separated in that, yes, there was a separate entrance, but it could not be blocked off. And when you look at the building code for an ADU...
Excuse me, what is an ADU?
Accessory dwelling unit. That, uh, it has to be separate. The building, the, the building permits that deal with ADUs, you have to be able to lock it off and be separate. It's not open to the people, the, the people who live in the other structure to just come and go. Uh, we pointed that out to him, that the present structure, uh, is not able to be locked. There were French doors there, which, uh, if you look at the plan with, with the, with the wall remo- uh, red, marked in red that we want removed, there was, that, opening into the dining room did have French doors, but those are going one way or the other. We, uh, tried to explain to him that this was multi-dimensional, multi-generational living that the constitution, uh, provides for. Not only that, Massachusetts statutes also provide for it. Section three of, um, forty-eight. And that the Supreme Court has, in fact, determined that multi-generational li- life, living is a single family, is, is covered by a single-family living. We asked him...
Do you have a site for that, for the?
Yeah.
SJC, or the name of the case?
Yeah, uh, it's, um, where is it? I got it written here. It's, uh, Moore versus East Cali-Cleveland.
Could, could you repeat that for me?
Moore versus East Cleveland. I have it here.
Okay.
Uh, four thirty-one U.S., four ninety-four, nineteen seventy-seven.
So, uh, it's a U.S. Supreme Court case.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, MGL forty A, section three. also provides for multi-family, multi-generational living. And any of it, uh, to, to go further, um, all we wanted, all we want, uh, we're, we're requesting from him was that we remove that, the rest of that wall that you see marked in red, which if anything, opened up the, the, uh, if you will, separates, it removes even greater any chance of separation. He, he stated repeatedly that it was his opinion because locks could be put on that door that it was an ADU. And that's like saying, well, yeah, if we do something illegal, then you might be right, but we're not doing that. So why are you basing your decision on something we're not doing? Uh, he then said, well, by opening that up, if you take that wall out, then what you're doing is you're expanding an ADU. And you, you'll be over the nine hundred feet, square feet of living space. We said to him, that would be true if it was an ADU, but it's not an ADU. It's a living area with a kitchen. I, I believe you know that you can have as many kitchens in a house as you want. The Bach case, uh, established that a long time ago. And that what, because you might do something, um, that, that would potentially make the situation illegal, doesn't, that, doesn't mean that that's what you're doing. You presented plans and if you've changed those plans, uh, he would see, because he has the right to inspect as you're going through the process. So he said, as long as we did not remove that wall, he would give us a permit, which again, made no sense to us. But we said, okay, we'll take that permit and we'll appeal to the, to the zoning board and ask them to allow us to take that wall down. So either way, the situation is going, we'll, we have, we have a building permit. We would like to have that more open. It would be open to the kitchen, to both kitchens, the dining room would be. Uh, better for bigger family gatherings because I don't know if you, any of you know the Burks, but there's a bunch of them, uh, and they, and they party. Um, so, s- s- and one last point. If you look at the, 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 the house from the street, the garage and where the cars are parked in front of the garage is on the left side of the house. The door to get into the, uh, area is on, uh, the separate door is way over on the far right. Nobody uses that door to go in and out of the house because they park their cars in the driveway. All of them go in and out through the main door, which enters into the living room and then you go through the dining room to get to, uh, the, um, in, in-law suite. So all we're doing is we're asking to make some modifications to an indoor, an existing indoor suite. And we don't understand the logic of the building inspector. And I think Marissa was in those meetings. I think, Marissa, have I, have I properly represented?
Yeah.
The view of the building inspector?
Yep.
So Max isn't here. Is he, does, is he on Teams?
He's not.
Okay.
No.
So for everybody else on the board, I think this is the first building inspector appeal that you've heard.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't had one in quite a while that I can recall. There was a period of time where we had, you know, I've been on the board close to twenty years, so there was a period of time during that, it seemed like every month we'd have one or two. So very few do we receive. So this jurisdictionally is the process to appeal a determination by a building inspector. The right of appeal is first to the ZBA. And if the person, either side is aggrieved, be it the town or, in this case, because it's a permit, or, um, the petitioner, they have a right to appeal to the Superior Court or the Land Court. So this is the, you know, the first step in that process. So if, if we believe that the building inspector's decision was improper, arbitrary and capricious, we have the authority to overturn the building inspector. So what we have for a record here are petitioners', um, application, their petition for, um, review, the plans. Uh, we don't have a written determination. So sometimes when we, we, we get a, um, oftentimes when we get, um, an appeal, there's a, a letter from the building inspector that describes the rationale for the decision they're making. It's often a request of the building inspector to enforce the bylaw and, um, the building inspector saying, no, I'm not going to enforce, I see it differently. And then there's an appeal. And sometimes you get an appeal like this that, um, don't agree with the determination in the building permit application on a bylaw zoning issue. So that's how it gets here. And we typically conduct this type of hearing the same way we do other public hearings with looking to see if anyone has something to say about the petition on either side and then discussing it and voting. So that's what we'll, we'll, we'll look to do. So is there anyone who wanted to be heard in?
Yes.
Opposition to this?
Yes.
Petition. Yes, so could I have your name and address, sir?
Yeah. Clayton Curtis.
If you don't mind, Clayton, just using the microphone over there that way. Or, you know what, I can bring you this one. You can stay where you are.
I guess this is our, uh?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's your address, sir?
Clayton Curtis.
Your address?
Nineteen Parsons Dr- Drive. I'm the, uh, direct abada to, my yard is the one to the right, next, next door to the plan there. My house.
What would you like to say about this petition?
Okay, first, uh, this is beside the point, but the Burks have not lived there thirty years. The Burks have lived there less than twenty-five. So, but it, again, I say it's beside the point. Uh, what I have encountered the past three months is waking up to a huge construction site every morning, right next door to me here. And it started right after Christmas. And, uh, there's been nothing but trucks, electricians, plumbers, junk trucks, dump, dumpsters the size of a tra- a trailway bus and noise all day long of, of, uh, pieces of everything coming out, going into a dumpster. Now they're finishing up with plumbing and things like that. And to me, uh, I didn't know, or I haven't heard from anyone as to what went on or what's going on. And my, uh, concern was, said, uh, with all that can, with all the activity coming from that area, what, what is, is happening? And somebody said, well, it, it, then I, I heard from somebody up there, oh, he's doing inside there. And I said, inside, okay, fine, you, you don't have to have a permit or anything. But I said, how much, uh, how can you do an inside like that and be just, just doing a little inside job with all that's going on? What else is going on and why? Why do we, uh, have all, all of this, all of the time? Like, like, to me, it doesn't seem like just a little simple operation. What, what is going to go on? And I didn't know until the other day. I got my card and then when I had a chance, I went down and tried to find out the fact that it was, uh, the determination was being appealed by a building inspector. And when it's appealed like that, that concerned me. Why, why is, uh, turned, uh, turned down? I said, that meant it was turned down. Why? And here I am, finding out and, uh, uh, looking at the, uh, thing, which all seems fine. I've known the Burks for years since they moved up there. And I knew the mother that lived in the apartment there. I could see them maybe renovating the apartment because it was very small and needed, needed some, you know, probably new appliances and things like that. But my main reason I'm here is that's, as I said, I've had three months with, and I have not seen the Burks once in probably, uh, three and a half months. They've been, I don't know, maybe they're in Florida or something, but, uh, well, that's.
Well, do you understand the narrow area that's in dispute? It's just one interior wall, whether it can come down or not?
That.
That's what the appeal's about, just an interior.
Yeah, that one interior wall and.
If they leave the interior wall up.
Yeah.
They don't need to be here.
Recently, just recently, but again, I'm, why, why all the spaces and?
Well, they're, they're reconfiguring the entire in, that, that wing of the house.
Yeah.
So they, it sounds like they demoed the whole thing and there's a lot of work to be done.
Yeah.
And the plans, the plans show that, that they're moving the different spaces. They moved, they're putting the bedroom in one area, so they gutted it. And, you know, that's, that's what happens. I know it's inconvenient. I just had a knock-down in a two-and-a-half-story house built right next to me over the past ten months. So I, I appreciate that it's disruptive, but, you know, it can happen, it can happen anywhere in town.
Yeah. Well, I've done a lot of work myself and I, I understand what you're saying. And I wish, when I did the wor- any work now, so I wish I could have that dumpster. But at any rate, uh, I didn't know till recently, the, uh, this is going to be Mary and, and Bo- Dawn's apart- Dawn's apartment.
Yep.
So that's, okay, yeah.
So they've answered your questions through this process, this hearing? You've, you've gotten some information that you were wondering?
The, the what? Excuse me?
So do you have any questions about the, anything that is happening now? Like with this wall going, staying up or going down?
If, if it goes down, I, no, I don't have any here.
Okay.
Except.
All right, well, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Could I have your name and address, please?
Sure. Eighteen Parsons, Anthony Antonov.
Who was his name? I didn't get that.
Anton Antonov, eighteen Parsons Drive. I live two houses removed from, uh, Tom and Mary. So yes, that's all true. Nobody used the side door. I lived there for twelve years and never seen anybody. I never even knew that, uh, Tom has his parents in the house, truly. But, uh, yes, they, they busy with the guests, but never bother no one. And the way I see it, and by his opinion, I mean, I come here just because, you know, I got the card in, in appeal. And appeal is just like, uh, Mr. Curtis saying, it's something wrong. I was thinking, you know, like a zoning, uh, uh, bed or, or they putting second floor, whatever. Not, not I'm concerned. If they, with the, if, if this is with bylaw, it's totally fine with me. What I see, uh, by removing that wall, they're making that house more one-house family than, rather than separate. Just, I, I never knew what they do, what they're planning to do. But, but on the surface, you know, we're removing the wall in the middle of the house to make joint kitchen and dining room, that's make less that, what that fancy word, you, uh, whatever the separation unit, it's going to be. So, you know, so they're not violating any zoning, you know? They're not trying to make it two-family houses, a house out of it, you know, living wars. I have my mother before she died, lived with me for eight months, you know, you know, in, downstairs. I, I never cook, across my mind and I'm, you know, I'm building that, uh, that unit that separates me from my mom, right? So, but I'm just saying that they are within their rights, you know, in the, in the building inspection on a power trip. You know, if I own the gun, it doesn't mean I'm a criminal, right? So if you, if you're building something that, uh, you know, make the family gather together, this is on surface, you know? It doesn't have a brainer, you know, to, to see, you know, this is not, uh, they, they within their rights to do whatever they want, you know? So this is my humble opinion. Uh, I, I hope you take into consideration when you're making decisions, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mary.
Anyone else who's online that wanted to speak about or ask questions about this petition?
Hey, guys, can you guys hear me okay? This is Tom. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, so of course, thank you for hearing this and, you know, the last thing we want to be is disruptive. And I guess first off, I didn't realize that the neighbors were going to be there. And, you know, I guess that's, that in itself, you know, reflects back on me. I probably should have, um, you know, probably should have had some conversation with Curtis. And certainly, you know, uh, I'm, I'm really appreciative, you know, of the support that I get from the neighborhood too, because I didn't expect either person there. And honestly, I didn't think this was going to be that hard or that disruptive. The goal was, um, was really simple, which is we were trying to make one bedroom instead of two and try to reorganize it so Mary and I could have good, um, you know, good quality of life for the next twenty years. Um, and, and of course, along the way, honestly, helped my daughter, right? My daughter and her family needed the help. And honestly, it's a, it was, it was us actually making a pretty big sacrifice to move over there and out of the big house and, um, you know, and allow Jen and Robin, those kids, back in there. And so, anyway, I just wanted to introduce myself, appreciate the, the time and, and to my neighbors, you know, the communication should have been better. And that in itself, I apologize for that.
Okay, thank you, sir. So anyone else that wanted to be heard about this petition? It's on Teams. Use the raise your hand feature if you wanted. Okay, hearing none. Um, I won't close the public hearing yet, so I get a sense of the board. I can give you my opinion if you'd like. I see it as a multi-generational house. I don't see it as an ADU. I don't see that there's any detriment to the wall coming down. And I would, um, support the petition and overturn the decision of the building inspector.
Uh, I think what I'm, I'm looking at the plan, the existing and the proposed, and I'm, I think you said there's a French door on that wall currently, which isn't shown. And then there is a.
Because it's already gone.
Okay. But in the, in the, in the existing plans, it's not there, so.
I understand. But it was, it was when the, when the architect went in to do that, because originally, we didn't have architectural drawings like that. So when, when he went in, it was already gone.
Okay. And then, but then in the proposed plan, that wall's still there.
Yeah, but that, it's marked, marked in red.
I, I understand, I understand that.
That, that, I was showing.
But that red is, is a, is after the fact, right? Like, so you have, I guess.
I was showing you what was approved and then the red is what we want taken out.
So normally in proposed plans, you wouldn't have that wall there. So you don't have to mark it out in red. Because you have the existing, right? And you have that wall there and then you have this would be gone, so you'd see that it's, it's gone.
Send me the plans, the, the way he sent them, so.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I guess that's the, there, there's just some irregularities with how this is documented. But I think beyond that fact, if that wall's coming out, I, I don't necessarily see an issue with it. If anything, it was an ADU in the beginning. If you look at what the definition of an ADU is, are there, are the utilities separate in that, uh, that wing? If you look at what the definition of an ADU is, are there, are the utilities separate in that, that wing? Like, is there like a separate meter or?
Oh, they're not.
No.
Okay, so. I think that the biggest thing is that it is completely closed off. There are multiple entrances. We're hearing from the neighbors that that other entrance wasn't used. So if anything, we're actually getting away from that, and it is now becoming a larger space for multi-generational living, when before it was an ADU. I think if you looked at what the definitions were. I don't think you're expanding an ADU, because it's all going to be one space. And as long as you're not, like, it's already built, so it's.
Yep, that's how I see it.
Okay.
How about you, Paula?
Same.
So, how about you?
Same, I mean, I'm not the architect. It's not a load-bearing wall, like, it's not a problem with structural integrity, right?
Well, if they're going to open it, they'll just, they'll fix it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They'll put steel in it if they need to, so.
I have no issue.
Okay. Knowing that Mr. Drukas will write an exceptional opinion for me, I'll gladly make a motion.
Thanks.
Um, so, uh, first I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I'll make a motion to approve petition twenty-five oh-two to overturn the determination of the building inspector in issuing permit B twenty-five twenty-four to allow the removal of the interior wall as shown on the plans, and to make a finding that this is not an accessory dwelling unit. It's used for multi-family, multi-generational living space. And that, I think that's all we need. So do I have a second on that motion?
Well, before we second, could we add a note to update the proposed plan? So we have it on file, that it is accurate?
And that the, the plans be updated to reflect the actual condition, and there's no change to any of the exterior dimensions. Okay? Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so you have your relief?
Thank you.
And then I'll make a motion to adjourn our public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, guys, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.